Well, let me, let me, let me let everybody in first. There's people in the waiting room. So you should be all set. We're recording and people are entering now.
Okay. I'd like to call a meeting to order of the town councils, community and economic development committee. My name is Peter Collin, but I'm chair. Also attending is Fred Chase, member. Absent is Bill Wood, member.
Pat?
Alright, so I'll open the planning board meeting for Wednesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, being six thirty in Heaven Quorum. Still operating under the, the Zoom guidelines. And currently there's no one present at the members of public meetings in the Capitol building. The following members of planning board up at the same remotely, and I'm happy to sit with chair. Mr. Raymond Gemian, this is Gene Green of the Clark, Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair. Mr. Steven Gallagher and two associates. During the meeting, all the votes, the, all the votes will be taken as roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating remotely. This is Jennifer Debohran, economic development director. This is Jasmine Caranachi, assistant town planner. I don't believe the town engineer, Mr. Greg Tansy as well as he's not with us this evening, correct? This is the ball green. I don't believe Mr. Tansy is with us. So the way the meeting will be conducted is everyone's mic will be muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as I can hear on the agenda, the project representatives might be unmuted. If a project is a public hearing and allows for a public comment, guests that use the chat feature to ask a question by listing your name, address, and your question. The chair or the host, which is Mrs. Devoe Green this evening, will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the, when the host, Mr. Deverby, recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hands. First, public hearing this evening at six thirty is a joint meeting. I'll open the joint meeting with the CEDC, one sixty-eight to one eighty Broad Street. This is a zoning amendment. Mr. Colin Boris, do you want to open the public hearing?
Yeah, so I'll open the public hearing. It is six thirty-three.
Mrs. Faranachi, do we have the legal posting? Could that be right into the record?
From Josh.
Yeah, the legal posting pad is done by the council clerk, so I'm not sure that we get a copy of that typically.
Are we sure it was posted and they said it was?
Yes, it was posted. I can search for it online if you want while you're, while you're continuing.
Mr. Colin, what if you have the legal ad read in before we proceed? Do you want to proceed?
Pardon me?
Do you want the legal ad read into the record before we proceed? Do you want to proceed?
I, I think we can go ahead and just make sure we do it before. For the end of the meeting.
So the the first joint meeting with the CEDC is one sixty-eight, one eighty Broad Street, which is zoning amendments. Sponsored by Council Gallagher, is he here to represent?
I don't believe it is.
See him unless he's on the phone.
Is anybody from the applicant here that would like to speak or make a presentation? And Mr. Colin Boris, if you want to run the meeting, feel free. I know it's a joint meeting.
Go ahead. You're good, Pat.
If you want to take over, go ahead. I don't want to. It's more a council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Meltzer from Edgewood Development. I'd be glad to run through. I put together a very quick presentation just to outline what it is that is before this. These, I guess, these, these boards tonight. If you'd like me to do that, I can do it.
I think that'd be great. I think what we'll do is just so the public and everybody online understands how this process will work. It's a public hearing. So we'll ask that the applicant make their presentation on both, ask their questions. And then we can open it up to public comment. And we ask that the public just, you know, ask their question. Ask to be recognized in the chat as we discussed earlier. Or we'll dial out star nine. We just ask that you keep your public comments to three minutes. And if it's something that's already been said, please allow somebody else to speak. So with that, go ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. So again, Steve Meltzer with Edgewood Development. Also here with me is Jerry LaRusso. And the landowners represented today by Tom Perkins, he's here as well as Rob Pellegrini, attorney for the, the landowners. What's, what's before you today? And for consideration by the planning board and the, the city council subcommittee is the, the rezoning of a portion of what is actually one eighty Broad Street, one sixty-eight. I don't believe is, is part of this, but it, it might be. I'd have to look closely at the lot lines. But nevertheless. So I'm going to run through just some, some quick slides, which, you know, this is mostly visual. And it's the, the issue is that the, the CBD zone runs for a certain distance from the street line on Broad Street and ends. But the lot, lot is continued throughout the industrial B zone back behind the CBD zone. This is the site. It's the triangle that you see there, which is framed by the railroad to the, to the left. The Broad Street to the right and I'm sorry. Do you need to? I'm going to share my screen right now. Hold on.
Sorry about that. We can't see anything.
No, no, I just didn't. I didn't, I didn't do it fast enough. That's all. So let me know when you can see the screen.
Yep, we're good.
Okay. All right. So, so as I said, the, the site is the triangular site, which is framed by the railroad to the left, the Broad Street to the right and the town river on, on top to the north. It is the site of the Henry Perkins Foundry. And we are, have been working with the Perkins folks and also with many of your town officials for a couple of years now to try and find a good way to redevelop the site. We've had some, some ideas which we presented before the town council and before the planning department and before the planning board as well. We know that we need to, to keep working on those concepts. But before we can, we need the ability to make application to the planning board. And because what we're proposing really is a mixed use development, we can't do that in a, an industrial zone. And let me just, if you see, if you can see my cursor, I'm not sure you can. I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. I'm tracing the zoning line, which runs through the parcel to the right. Over here is CBD, to the left is industrial. As you can see, that lot line, I mean, that, the zoning line doesn't only run through the parcel, but it runs right through many of the buildings. Makes it very difficult for the, for the parcel to be redeveloped in any one way. Sort of turns it into two parcels. And the question really is, or a question is, is whether it should be an industrial redevelopment or a, or something else. And we envision it as something else. We envision it as a mixed use development and not an industrial development. And that's why we're asking that the entire site be one zone and that it all be CBD. In addition to the, to the Henry Perkins land, we also have under agreement or purchased, we purchased one of those houses that I've circled there and own it. The other we have under agreement, so that will also become part of this project. If we're able to, to go forward and bring applications before the planning board. And again, just to zoom out a little bit, you can see where that zoning line is, how it cuts through the, that triangle. And transsects the lot. That's how it is currently. And what we'd like to do and what this amendment provides for is that crosshatched purple area to be zoned or rezoned from industrial B to CBD. That's what's there now. It could possibly become some kind of industrial development in its current status. But we don't see that as, as a progressive way to move the downtown and extended downtown area of Bridgewater forward. We don't see that as the best and highest use for this property. And what we envision, you know, here's some of the, the renderings from this, the work that we've done in the past. Just showing some kind of mixed use development. But we recognize and that big X is there that once there is a rezoning, then we're going to go back to the drawing board and do a complete redesign of this project and try as best we can to comply with the CBD requirements. And bring a project that everybody can be proud of and do one that, as I pointed out here in some of the language really fits in with the spirit of the downtown revitalization plan and the comprehensive master plan. Draft. I don't know if that's still in draft form or if you're still working on it, but I just have taken some quotes from there. And essentially that's what I've got. Got to figure out how to unshare my screen. As soon as I do that. Not sure how to do that. Can you do that to me, Jasmine? Because right now it's. Let me keep trying.
Steve, have you gone to where the share screen is? There should be like an X. It just clicked out again and it will unshare.
Yeah, I'm not getting that. Oh, there it is. Stop share. Okay. There you go. Thank you. Sorry about that. So I'm, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. You know, I don't want to overcomplicate the discussion tonight. It, this isn't an application for a development project. This is, this is a request that, that the town rezoned that portion of the lot so that we can bring an application for a redevelopment project.
Mr. Colin Boris, you, your boy can take it first with the questions.
Pardon me?
Your boy can go first if you have questions or comments.
Yeah, sure. So Steve, this is really simply just that simple thing. You're asking for those two parcels to be included in the central business district, right?
Yeah, we're, we're asking for the balance of those parcels to be included in CBD. Yep.
And no other relief. You're not asking for any other relief at this time.
That's correct. That's correct.
Does anyone, Fred, do you have anything?
No particular question. I, I do thank Steve for his discussion tonight and of course, as well, his previous presentation before the town council, which I thought was really very positively received. And I don't know that I have any particular question because I do believe that what is before the each board tonight is a fairly straightforward zoning change, which I would agree with Steve's assessment. It, it is really in accordance with our comprehensive master plan.
Right? Okay.
Planning board members, questions for the applicant at this point?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I just, I'll make one, one point. I, yeah, I, I think that obviously this town has moved forward and where industry once was, it no longer should be. And I have no problem with rezoning this into what is proposed. I would only suggest that if this proposal goes for the council and the council approves that, Mr. Meltzer, that before you come up with a complete plan, you come before the planning board simply to discuss general concepts and what you want and what we would like to see also.
Certainly, we're, you know, we, we consider the, that redesign discussion with both the planning department and all, you know, all departments of the town as well as the, the planning board. You know, we want to make a successful process as well as a successful developments. So I think that to everybody's best interest to work that way.
Planning board members, questions, comments, concerns?
I'm good. You know, it's pretty straightforward. You know, I, I agree with Mr. Chase said. I agree with our basis that, you know, the meetings on everything else. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, same. Sounds good.
And I think it's positive for the town.
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Colin Boris, we have some correspondence from Mr. Wood. Would you like to read that into the record?
I can't find my copy of that. Do you have it handy, Pat?
Jasmine, do you have it?
I do. It's from Mr. Wood, correct?
Correct.
Says Deborah and Jen, I will not be in attendance at tonight's joint meeting, but would like to share my thoughts on D F Y twenty-two twelve zoning for one sixty-eight, one eighty Broad with the group. Please read this note into the record prior to any action on the ordinance. I support the change of this zoning as illustrated in D F Y twenty-two oh twelve to central business district. Ask that no further amendments be made and that the thirty percent rule for commercial and a mixed use case within the CBD be retained and not diminished. The developers have requested a drop in fifteen percent for business reasons. But we can see by the Elm Street Warehouse projects, the Fruit Street Warehouse and the proposed construction for Bedford Street South of the Common. Commercial is alive and well. We are already losing a share of industrial zone due to this change. So let's not have the town give up more. Thanks, Bill Wood.
Thank you.
Jen, can I just, I mean, the fact that Mr. Wood expressed his opinions on this matter is not, no way binding as, as a vote. It doesn't constitute a vote on this, with this committee, right?
Expressing an opinion.
Okay, thanks.
And before we move on to public comment, I think we just had one other letter. Was that from Dr. Hunt? I don't have that one, but I saw it. Was that to the planning board or to C E D?
Yeah. I have it. I, it, this is a, I can read it into the record. This is a letter from let me get it here a second. From Melissa Remandetta, three seventeen Lake Side.
No, Pat, I mean Pete, not that one. It's the one from Dr. Hunt.
Oh, I don't have that one. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Everyone see my email? Read it. This is an email from Dr. Carlton Hunt to Michael Dutton, Jennifer DeBoeran, Dennis Gallagher, Francis Souza, Matthew Rush and Peter Colombo, is Patrick Driscoll, William Wood and C C Stephen Rogan. All, I've been wondering what the status is on the proposed rezoning to enable the subject properties redevelopment. I was waiting for posting of hearings or committee agendas to comment, but with a long delay decided to send this concept for town consideration. First, I am not against the rezoning if there are no changes to CBD requirements, especially commercial space requirements. Second, I think the rezoning to CBD would, could be expanded to include other industrial zone areas on the south side of the railroad track. See attached images. Third, consider modifying the current industrial zone with long developed houses to residential zoning. Why do, why do that? Why do you think this? We need to think future whenever, wherever we can, wherever can. Expanding the CBD, as I suggest, would establish more potential for mixed in the downtown. Recognizing current CBD zoning cuts through the historically significant former McElwain Shoe Factory parcels on the north side of Perkins Street and an eyesore of equipment storage and have silk slip zoning. And the lumber company, probably the only legitimate industry in this area, may not be in business in the future. We should consider any rezoning these industrial zone properties to accommodate future mixed use development. Several of us have had the vision of the walkover shoe factory being redeveloped into mixed use rather than for storage. I am told the building has greater historic value than the McElwain School. Unfortunately, it has never been put on the historic register. I hope you will seriously consider this concept as we work towards downtown business restoration and improvements. Carlton D Hunt, Ph.D., A.D. Austin Street, Bridgewater.
I don't think we received any.
You received no other written comment that I'm aware of.
Whoever Pete is, can you please mute your mic?
I just did.
So if there's no other board comments at this point, we can go back.
Mr. Chairman, could I just have one, I have one quick question. I just want to clarify. Mr. Wood's letter, where he referred to the changes in central business district. What we're, what we have before us right now is simply a change of zoning, correct?
A map change, just a line change, not.
It's a line change. Nothing in terms of changing the makeup. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, do you have a comment?
No.
All right, so we can come back, but I just want to give the public a chance to speak. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on this. Now to be for us. I can't see. I can't see anything, so. So Dr. Hunt, if we could, I mean, Dr. Hunt.
He's unmuted.
Hi, thank you for reading that into the record. I'm sorry about the typos that made folks struggle to read it. I just think when we're going to look at zoning, as was pointed out by Steve, the graph comprehensive master plan does ask for and suggest we rezone places. And this is an opportunity to do everything in one shot in that particular part of town. That's the only reason I, I'm suggesting that the council consider expanding and modifying those other areas as part of this. As I stated in the email, I'm not against the rezoning as long as it's completely applicable to and retains all of the central business district requirements. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Devoe Brand, do you see anybody?
We glad. I don't see anybody at this time.
Okay, any other board questions or comments? So I'll just make one before we continue. So I, I know we've had, this was roughly our third zoning match that we've had before some last year. I voted against the last two because the line was going to be jagged and wasn't going to be consistent off the road. And it, they both further encroached into residential areas. And I, I believe that was the right thing, both on old Pleasant Street and Main Street. But on this one, it's already industrial on the back. The site needs to be redeveloped. It's watered by the river and the railroad tracks. So I, I, I think this case is different than those other two. And I would support it. But I would agree with Mr. Wood that, you know, I think other people have made the comment that any, any project that comes back before us, we hope, you know, we want to see the thirty percent commercial. And I wouldn't be in favor of changing the downtown zoning, you know, just to be upfront that, that everybody knows. I agree with Mr. Wood's comment on that.
Yeah, I just want to echo those thoughts. I mean, the central business district zoning is kind of complicated and it does allow a lot of freedom. And I think, I think it offers enough freedom to make projects viable without granting further relief. Has been, has been discussed earlier.
I'd like to sign if the applicant has any more comments, the boards or the public. One more time, and then we can ask, close the public hearings. And it, does anybody wish to speak?
Guess a motion to close the public hearing, right?
It's in order. For your, for your board, correct?
Yep.
I, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call vote, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
And I am a, a yes, so. Hearing is closed.
Okay, how about on the plank one side?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Was that that?
I thought I didn't see Mr. Jimmy, but was that Mr. Jimmy or Mr. Geller? I'm sorry.
It was me.
Okay, so Mr. Jimmy made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Was that Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Okay, so I'll take the, the role. Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. So that's to close the, the public hearing, right? That's all we did.
Right. Right.
So do we want to discuss it as one, 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 we will put discussion on it between both committees, right? Do we want to discuss it any further or make motion?
I'm personally ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the, the change.
Okay, is that, is that a, a motion to recommend to pass it by town council?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll second that. And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
And I am a no. So we have a split vote.
So do we have a motion on the planning board side?
I'll make the motion to approve the change. Send the recommendation to the council.
I'll second it.
Just, this is just to grant the motion. There's nothing to do with any percentages or anything else. This is just to rezone it, correct?
You know, I, I see Mr. Colin Botes' point. I, you know, I, I think all of us would rather see a commercial, but I'd like to see it redeveloped. So I think if something comes back, I, I want to see it with a strong commercial component, the 30%, so. I'll support it in hopes of that, but um. That's where I stand on it. So do we have any other discussion? So I'll start with. I can't see. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Did I forget you, Mrs. Greeno either? Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so, okay. That's it for that hearing, correct?
Yes.
So the applicant is good to go, right, at this point?
Yep, we'll send, we'll send the planning board recommendations up to the council and Councilor Colin Botes and Councilor Chase can report back to their fellow counselors as to their decision and they can move forward with the ordinance.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Close on for the meeting with. I'm trying to go through my notes here, I'm sorry. So the next meeting, the next public meeting that we have is a joint meeting with the CEDC on the zoning recodification with Matt Bobrowski. So I'll open that public hearing at this time. Pete, do you want to open that for you as well? Pete leave.
He's here. He's on mute though. Maybe.
Mr. Colin Botes?
You're really soft, Pete. I don't know if anybody heard you.
We're just looking to open, I'm not going to have you open the zoning recodification with Matt Bobrowski.
Mr. Chase, do you want to open it?
Yes, I'd be happy to open the Community Economic Development Committee public hearing. It's 7:05 PM. In attendance, he is our chairman, Peter Colombo, and myself, member representing District Four.
Mr. Colin Botes, it, all right, so. Mrs. DeBoeran, do you want to go? I think ultimately we're looking to really just end this for a while and come back or kick it out for a couple of months because we have not heard back from Attorney Bobrowski or got to a second workshop.
That's correct. So just to update everyone, after your last workshop with Mr. Bobrowski at, over the summer, I received the comments back from the committee and the planning board members that chose to comment. I compiled all that information. I sent it off to Attorney Bobrowski and gave him everything that he needed. I hadn't heard anything, so I reached out to him, hadn't heard anything, so reached out to him again. He indicated to me that he was traveling and that he would call me when he returned. Didn't hear anything back, so I reached out again, and I still haven't heard anything back, so I'm not sure if he's still traveling or if he's, you know, focused on other clients or what his, his going on right now with that. So I'm still trying to reach out to him. Either way, I haven't received any additional materials from him for the committee and the board to review or to comment on or to workshop over additionally. So I think it's probably prudent for us to either continue this out, the hearing, or again, we can, as I recommended once before, we can, you know, take this ordinance off the table since it's likely that a whole new ordinance will have to be rewritten anyway. We can withdraw this completely and start fresh once we get a whole new package from Attorney Bobrowski. So it's, you know, your decision. You can continue this out. If you're going to continue this hearing, I would suggest doing it after the holidays, after the first of the year. It's just because this time of year starts to get crazy for a lot of people. But it's completely your, your decision.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we that we postpone consideration on whether it be this proposed ordinance or an entirely new ordinance until sometime after January 1st.
Yeah, I know, Ms. DeBoeran. At the end of the meeting, I've worked to discuss our schedule for next year and some amendments to that. But what is our second meeting in January right now?
January 19th.
Does everybody on the planning board have any, does anybody have any objection with continuing this to January 19th? Would somebody be willing to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue this to January 19th.
So by Mr. McDonald?
I'll second that.
Oh, Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Uh, yes.
Hello, Mr. McDonald?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase, do you have any? Is it just you? Or did you find Pete?
Uh, Peter, are you remaining on the call?
She shows up on the screen, but I think his audio is, is a little challenged.
Okay. Uh, Peter, I would make a motion to be consistent with that, just, just made by the planning board that we postponed any consideration of this until a joint session on January 19th.
Pete, can you give a thumbs up?
In the chat, Pete, if that helps. He's coming on my screen as a speaker, but.
Uh, Pete, if you can hear me, would you want to consider reaching me directly by telephone so that I could amplify it for purposes of the meeting and we would have your audio then?
Yeah, we try that.
Let me try to text you my, my information right now.
I just heard him. Pete, are you okay with the motion to continue this to January 19th?
Yes, hello, Pete? Okay. Uh, so Pete, the planning board has proposed continuing to the 19th of January. I would make a motion that we act similarly and also postpone any action until January 19th in a joint session.
Okay.
You concur with that?
I see. I concur.
Okay, so that's, so that's our second. So let's have a roll call vote, Peter.
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes as well.
Okay. Um, so I guess we can close our meeting. I'll make a motion.
I would just, I would just say.
First, we wait for them.
Well, so can you guys hear me? Am I muted now?
No, we can hear you.
So I just said that we just keep in mind, we're still waiting for a second workshop based on the feedback that we gave to Attorney Bobrowski. So if, if we do not have a workshop between now and the 19th, I would propose that that meeting on the 19th be closed up and we further continue the public hearing. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Say the one between now and then, which I think. All right. All right, so. Do we have a motion to close the, the, so we continue? So do we, we don't have to close it, correct?
That's correct. You don't close it. You just continued it to the 19th at 6:30, I assume.
Okay, yeah. So I, I believe that's our business with Mr. Colin Botes and Mr. Chase, correct?
That's correct.
So if you guys want to close your meeting, and then we can continue?
Uh, yes, we'll do that now. Peter, I'd, I'd make a motion that we, we close our CEDC meeting.
I'll second.
You seconded, thank you. And your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well. So our portion of the meeting is closed.
It's unfortunate. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
It's super.
Bye bye. Uh, thank you, members of the planning board for your, your patience this evening. Enjoy the remainder of your session.
Okay, so um. Board business, we have minutes to be approved. We're going to hold off onto our next meeting, because.
That's correct. Yep.
Then we have some board committee and liaison reports. I just, under this, I'd just like to discuss the schedule that Mrs. Farina she set up, sent out today, if possible, so we can set that for 2022. Pull it up.
Jasmine, do you have it to pull up? You're muted, Jasmine.
Sorry, yes, it's just being a little slow. Sorry, it's taking a fail to share.
All right, so we typically meet the first and the third of every month, correct?
Yes, right.
So I think January is all set, February is all set, correct? March is all set. What is April 20th? Why is that off the agenda?
That's our school vacation week, so typically we don't meet that week because some people go away. We're happy to put it back on if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to put it back on. Just if we need to, if there's nothing on it. It's not a holiday there to put it on.
I agree. Oh, wait, I, oh, let me just double check. That might be. Um. No, that is a Jewish, I think, oh, maybe, no, that's not a Jewish. There's certain Jewish holidays now that we can't meet on, and I just have to double check and make sure that's not one of them.
Okay, if it's not a holiday, I'd like to put it back on.
Okay, I'll double check that in the morning. I don't have the list in front of me. I'll have to double check it in the morning.
Probably makes sense to keep off. That's the fourth.
So most boards and committees only meet once in July and August, so that's why we just did July and August like that.
How, so August, why don't we put the first? July, why don't we leave that? I think Fourth of July week makes sense. Is everybody okay with skipping Fourth of July week?
Yes.
I would, why don't we add the first August one back on? Just if that way we have something, you know, we have formas or whatever, we can, if we don't need it, we can cancel it, but there's no holiday on the first of August, correct?
Right. So you want, you want two meetings in August then?
Correct. What about October? What's the reason behind that for us? Is that Columbus Day?
That, no, that is a Jewish holiday, I think. Hold on.
Yom Kippur, yeah.
Yeah, Yom Kippur.
So is that a time, I'm just.
Uh, there's, there's like four Jewish holidays that we've been told now we cannot meet, have meetings on, public meetings on.
So for the Jewish holidays, Passover is the 15th to the 22nd April.
So that might be why we're not meeting that week of April.
And Yom, Yom Kippur is October 4th and 5th.
And so that, that's why, that is definitely why we're not meeting on, in that first Wednesday of October. Correct.
Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah.
All right, so we're going to add the. July, we're going to keep the Fourth of July week off. October and April are Jewish holidays. That's been confirmed.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that amended schedule adding August back and leaving October, April, and July as one meetings? Would anybody like to make changes to that? I guess we could add July 6th on if we wanted to, but we couldn't add April or October.
Well, just let me throw this out. Yeah, and, and it seems to me, I may be wrong, somebody correct me, that it'd be easier to cancel a meeting than to set one up.
Correct.
Then maybe the July meeting should be set.
July 6th.
Yeah, when, when is July 4th? What date does it fall on?
Two days before the 6th.
Pardon me?
Two days before the 6th.
Monday.
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 Mr. Geller. Um, I, I just, I just, I'm just a little concerned about us getting inundated with something and only having one meeting a month for two months straight.
So just as a, as a FYI, that week is my vacation week. I will not be at your meeting, so just keep that in mind as well.
So if we, if we got the August 1st, Mr. Jimmy, we only have one month of one meeting. We add the August 3rd. And August 17th, then we'll, July will be the only month in about six months that we have one meeting, five months that we have one meeting.
So if we add, uh, August, the August meeting.
Add August.
Then we, we're, we're talking about July, October and April as one meeting. Does that work still?
Correct.
I think Ray's right. It's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to add one.
All right, let's put it, let's put it on. Seven, six, seven, eight, three. You know what? That, I agree, because formas and stuff come in and only three, and three of us are on, we can go in and, and sign them. It's scheduled, it's in the schedule, we can take care of it. So we don't have to schedule a separate meeting. Right?
Right.
So why don't we, um, make those amendments? We'll add by 6th, by April 3rd. Likely I won't be around for July 6th, but like I said, we'll keep it on the books and we'll just, we'll note to only put necessary things on that week. I guess for, for, for many to do endorsement or something like that.
So I'm sorry, you said April, so you meant August 3rd?
We're gonna add August 3rd, July 6th, and April and October is saying we need to keep blank because of time policy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can't make it. The only thing we could do there is change the date, but for right now, I think we're fine with those.
Right.
Okay. Um, so do we have a motion to, I guess, we don't need a motion, but is everybody okay with accepting this, uh, 2020 meeting schedule? We can have it posted as amended on the town website?
Yes.
Yeah, sounds good. Just, uh, just a small note on my end, uh, I might, I might be a little spotty on availability this coming February, just because that's what we do. So just as a heads up on that. See what happens there.
A lot of you isn't going to be the word, but that's okay. Grouchy is a good word, right?
Tired.
But it will probably be like all my.
Wait until you catch up to Pat.
Yeah.
Like everybody else, they could sleep when they're happy. And my kids are up all night.
Yeah, see which one I went up with.
You don't know how much I like it when somebody tells me how miserable they are because they're not sleeping. I'm like, yes, somebody's with me, you know?
My kids always slept. Just ask my husband.
I mean, do you know what the mission I told me tell us?
What was that?
Do you know what it is? Are you sharing out of them?
Oh, yeah, we're having a, I'm having a son.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
All right, um, any directors' reports or staff reports?
No.
Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So. I'll second.
So I heard Mr. Geller, um, make the motion. I heard two seconds, who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Michael.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yeah.
Mr. Geller?
Yep.
McDonald's?
Yep.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good one.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy.